Welcome, everyone. This is the meeting of the Nottingham Zoning Board of Adjustment. I'm going to introduce the members of the board who are present here so that those of you who are applicants or members of the public may know who we are. I am Bonnie Winona McKinnon. I'm the chairman of the zoning board. Terry Bonzer, can you raise your hand, Terry? So everybody, I guess they can see your name. Raylene Shippey Rice? Are you here? Raylene?
I am here.
Okay, there's Raylene. And Teresa? Bascom?
I'm here.
Thank you, Teresa. So these are the members of the board. We had an alternate president who's disappeared. Perhaps he's having technical difficulties, but this means the board is only four members out of five. And each of you applicants will be advised at the beginning of your hearing that you have the right to be heard by a full board. You don't have to make the decision about whether to redo your case or reschedule your case until it's time for us to vote. So you might have a sense of how you think the board's going. I mean, you can do it ahead of time, but you don't have to. You can do it right up until the voting on your case. So with that, we will begin. We we have three hearings scheduled tonight. And typically, we allow the applicant to present their case. I will read the case, just a little summary of the case before it begins. The person representing the applicant or the applicant, him or herself, will present your case to the board, and it's up to you to make your case about why we should grant the variance or the special exception that you are requesting. Or sometimes they're a waiver. These all look like variances tonight. So you will be first to speak. The board may, at any time during your presentation, ask you questions which you will kindly answer if you can. And then, when you're finished, members of the public will be invited to speak for and against your application. I'll take them as groups, those in favor, those opposed, or those who just wish to speak. Sometimes people don't wish to say therefore or against, but want to bring something to the board's attention. So the cases will be decided either tonight, or we can, the board can decide to postpone for 30 days if we think we need more information or we need expert advice. So that's basically the ground rules. I ask that everyone be obviously civil and polite. So the first hearing tonight is case number 21003-V8. From Fred Belanger, on behalf of owner James Witham, represented by Scott Frankowitz, requesting a variance from Article 2, Section C-2B of the Nottingham Zoning Ordinance to permit a new residence on a non-conforming lot with 95 feet of road frontage where 200 feet is required. The property is located at 23 Swan Drive in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as tax map 24 Lot 34. So members of the board will have a packet of information on this case. So if you could get those out, that would be good. And I'm going to turn the hearing over to Mr. Frankowitz.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Just so you're aware, I see that Kevin has joined.
Oh, great. So we now have five.
He hasn't said anything yet. Are you there, Kevin?
That's Terry. Kevin, can you hear us? And can you interact with us this evening?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. So are you on a phone or are you on video as well?
I am on my computer trying to get my video.
Hey, hi there. So Raylene, I don't know, do you wish to leave at this point?
I would appreciate. There are four members of the board to be excused, given that there are four members of the board present?
Only you can excuse yourself.
All right, then I will be excused. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, so we still have four members, four board members present, which means any one of the applicants can ask to postpone their hearing to another night when there are five, when there's a full board present. Obviously, you need three votes to get your application approved. And the more people that are here, the more likely you are to get your get your approval. So having said that, I will now again turn the microphone over to Scott Frankowitz, who is representing. That's how Fred Belanger fits into this picture because it's not clear. On behalf of James Witham, who's the owner, is Fred the contractor and you are?
I can go through that.
Thank you, Scott. There you are.
Scott Frankowitz from New Hampshire Land Consultants here tonight, representing James Witham. He's a property owner, and Fred Belanger has the property under agreement.
Okay, that makes sense.
He's the applicant on the variance request. As you said, it's located at 23 Swain Drive, tax map 24, Lot 34. And if I can share my screen, I can share the plans.
That would be great. Do you have to arrange that, Joanna?
No, he's all set.
Okay.
So everybody can see that now? I have a plan up of what was submitted for the
I can see it. I trust everyone else can.
Yes.
So like I said, 23 Swain Drive, it's located on Northwood Lake, sorry, Nottingham Lake. These lots were created back in 1962, part of Nottingham Lake shores. And the lot we're talking about is 17W, circling it with my cursor right now. It's one of few, if not the only lot not developed in the neighborhood. Mr. Belanger put it under agreement, and he's gone through the process of getting a variance, a septic design, and a shoreline permit. He got the denial from the building inspector, and therefore, we submitted our variance. The variance is for Article 2, subsection C, Point 2, Point B, which is requiring 200 feet of frontage, where this has approximately 95 feet of frontage. The lot area is .33 acres, 14,500 square feet of area. It is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. And on this plot plan that we submitted, you'll see that we're showing the 20-foot setbacks, which is required for pre-existing, non-conforming lots in Nottingham, and we're meeting all of those setbacks. So we're not asking for any setback variances. It's purely the frontage setback, or the frontage. And I said, he'll require to get a septic design and shoreline permit. And that's pretty much the whole application, and I can go through the the argument if you'd like.
I would like you to, but first, I'd like to give board members a chance to query you if anyone has questions at this point. Maybe could you tell us how large the lot is, actually?
Yeah, it's .33 acres. It's about a third of an acre, just over 14,500 square feet.
Thank you.
The septic design will, of course, only be a two-bedroom design.
Okay.
Because of the size.
Does anyone else have questions? There being none. Terry?
No, no.
There being none, Mr. Frankowitz, if you would present the rest of your your position, your arguments as to why we should grant you this.
I didn't know. Somebody else said something.
Madam Chair, Kevin Bassett.
Kevin, okay, thank you.
You stated that the lot acreage is .33. I'm looking at the first page of the applicant, and it says lot area .45. And this is the second, or rather, the third page in my package.
Right, I do see that. Mr. Belanger put the application together. I'm not sure where he got that number, but our survey shows it is .33.
So we would request a correction to that? Yes, Joanne?
It is an existing, pre-existing, non-conforming lot, regardless of the size.
This is just clerical.
It's a clerical. Can we change that, Joanna? The lot area, .33 acres instead of .45?
Yes, that can definitely be changed.
Okay, so I'm going to pencil it in on my copy. If the rest of you could do that as well, so we know what we're dealing with. Thank you, Kevin. Did you have anything else to add or ask?
You're welcome. And then, there are 20-foot setbacks, you know, here on the plan, if I'm not mistaken, for the house to the property line. They're not considering that variance at this time?
This is an existing, non-conforming lot, and per your regulations, pre-existing non-conforming lots, 20 feet to all property lines, and sand water and wetlands and everything, per section. It's in the same section as where we're asking for a variance, but it's a little bit lower in Section 3 setbacks.
Okay, understood.
Okay.
I noted why it says .45 on the application because our tax card says it's .45 acres. So it would be in Mr. Belanger's best interest to communicate with the assessing department regarding that discrepancy.
Would you like me to go ahead and read the supporting?
Yes, please.
So number one, variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the lot was created as a building lot, and there have been lots in the subdivision approved for that that are less conforming for residential uses. Sorry, I kind of mangled that. Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. The lot will be used for residential as other lots in this subdivision. Number three, substantial justice is done. The lot is being used for residential purposes as it was intended. And number four, the value of the surrounding properties are not diminished. The value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished as the applicant is proposing a new home. And number five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. A, for purposes of this sub-paragraph, unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguishes it from other properties in the area. No fear and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provisions and the specific application that provision to the property. And this parcel was created in, it says 1958, on the plan, it says 1962, with a 95-foot frontage. Since that time, frontage requirements are 200 feet. Without the requested variance, the lot would be non-buildable. And the proposed use is a reasonable one. All the homes in this subdivision are residents, and this lot would be used to build a new home.
Are there questions from board members? Questions or comments?
For the record, the 200-foot frontage was implemented in the town ordinance in what year? Joanne, would you know?
What is the question again?
The 200-foot frontage was either changed or implemented in the town ordinance in what year? And I assume it's post
Yeah, I don't know the year that that was put in. That's not noted in the ordinance. So that would take a lot of digging to find it, but.
Joanna, when does the ordinance begin? What year?
The current one that we have?
No, no, the original, it's on the front of every ordinance.
1980. Thank you.
We must have had zoning for 1980. No. Yes, it isn't the beginning. Maybe not.
So I have stuff that dates further back that called it the zoning ordinance and building regulations. So that might be we may have had zoning in Nottingham prior, but this one's dated as 1980.
Okay, so my guess is it came in in the late 70s, but I know when I moved to Barrington in 1970, there was no zoning there, and I don't think there was any here then either. I had a couple of friends who lived here. But anyway. So the subdivision definitely predates zoning is the point. Yes? Kevin?
I just want that stated for the record, as our decision is based upon that, correct?
Are there further questions from the board?
I'm good.
Is everybody good? Okay, then I'm going to ask members of the public now. Do any members of the public wish to speak in support of this application? If you do wish to speak, you must state your name, your address, and then your concern, comment, or whatever.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Puffin. I am the homeowner at 27 Swan Drive, so the property, abutting the property in question. My concern, and I hope that the zoning board takes strong consideration to the closeness of the water. We recently had a septic put into our system, and there was soil confirmation on our property. I own both of the lots that abut on the one-hand side, so the 17W, I believe it was. So that there's
Back up and ask you, please, are you to the right on the map or to the left?
If you go backwards, I can tell you what that last slide that was just showing by chance. This one, yes. So, yep, so on the roadside, I'm to the left. So I actually own 18W and 17W. Those lots are both now joined together, and part of the rationale and reasoning, they will not be subdivided in the future for building ordinances. We have a well that is on the second part of the lot because of the water distance to our property. Our septic is in front of the house because of soil confirmation otherwise. And we also have a drainage that runs under the property that is closest to the property in question. So I strongly am asking the board to consider those while considering a possible allowance for this request. I do have concerns just to the integrity of the structure and the soil with the waterfrontage on that side. So with regards to maintaining all other property, you know, distances and frontage and the footage, and making sure that those all stay intact, I do have those concerns, primarily the soil. I'm not sure if that was tested for possible well and septic implementation on that property. So I can't answer whether or not there has been a plan put in place for that. That would be one of my largest concerns.
So Terry, can you speak to that? Terry Bonzer?
On this
Concern about the septic, like, will this not be scrutinized by the state?
Yeah, the state, I mean, they have to submit it to the state, and I don't know how the soils are now, but most of Nottingham Lake is like pure sand, so I'm not sure how it is in that back down that way. I'm sure they have a test pit, and I think Scott could probably speak to what the soil is.
Yeah, I can definitely speak to that if you'd like me to.
I would like you to, because she clearly has a concern that it be, you know, a safe place to put a septic, I would say, when it's not going to infringe or encroach on her property.
Right. So I did a test pit out there, and like most lake properties, a lot around the lake properties are sandy soils. This was exactly that. It was break soils. And as you see on our septic or the plot plan I'm showing, we're placing the septic as far away from the lake as possible while meeting the town of Nottingham regulations of 20 feet from the property lines. And we're going to need, we have to get a shoreline permit. This line, I have my cursor going along right now, is a 50-foot setback from the lake, which is a shoreline setback. It'd be hard pressed for us to get a permit any closer to the lake with that, because there's no existing structures. So the house is at least, it's a little bit over 50 feet, and then with the area we need with the septic, the septic is at the upper part of the lot. The soil is great, and the abutters well is shown on this plan, and as you see, the other tank, all the piping and the lead field is outside of the well radius, her well radius that encroaches onto the lot that we're working on. It's not impacting her well radius at all.
Do you understand all of that, Rebecca? Dutton, is that your name? Excuse me, Dutton? Duffin?
Puffin, yes. Yes, I do understand. Like I said, I just hope that that's just taken into consideration. And it appears that it has been. That would be one of my primary concerns with that. And as I mentioned, with regards to the subdivision, our properties have been, or the properties that I own were initially subdivided, and they've now, we have amended that on our end. I am the owner for both of those lots. They will not be subdivided in the future. So something to consider as well when looking at a non-conforming lot in the area is that I'm not sure if any other properties have done the same, but mine has been.
Thank you. I think what Mr. Frankowitz was pointing out is that the septic is carefully scrutinized by both the engineers who design it and the state of New Hampshire, and it's even especially looked at because it's near a lake. So I think you have more safeguards because you're near the water than most other lots might have.
Yeah, and if I could add a little bit to that, is that the shoreline, the septic design will not be approved until the shoreline permit is approved. So you submit the septic, and then they hold it. If you meet all the requirements, they won't issue the permit until your shoreline permit is issued. So there is protection all around.
Right. And as far as your two lots being combined into one, is that what you were telling us? That you had the two non-conforming lots, and you combined them into one lot? Have you actually taken away that?
So I'm the owner of both of those. They were both sold as one property to me. I don't know from a town perspective, the official documentation that maybe had, but they were sold to me as one property. So I would have to do further digging. I don't know all of the background details there.
You get one tax bill or two?
One tax bill.
And on your deed, is there one property description or two?
I believe just the one. I can't confirm that for certain, though.
That would, they were probably combined. In any event, you are in an area of mostly non-conforming, what we call non-conforming lots, that were subdivided before the town had zoning. And we have special provisions in our zoning ordinance that allow people to use those lots if they meet certain requirements, which are, I'm sure, put there by the zoning, by the planning board in order to, for the health and safety of everyone down there. So I think the septic will be carefully scrutinized. And you should not, if everything is done properly, you should not have any kind of blowback from it.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything to add or to this discussion for or against, or just neutral concerns for your own property, as this Puffin had? Okay, I don't I don't hear any more. Do any board members have further questions? I don't hear any questions either. Is anyone prepared to make a motion regarding this application?
Well, you want to close the hearing?
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and allow the board further discussion if the board wishes. Or allow the board to make a motion regarding this application.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair.
Hey, Kevin?
To accept the application from Fred Belanger on behalf of owner James Witham, represented by Scott Frankenwitz, requesting a variance from Article 2, Section C, Dot 2, Dot B, with the Nottingham Zoning Board to permit a new excuse me, a new residence on a non-conforming lot with 95 feet of road frontage, with 200 feet is required. The property is located at 23 Swan Drive in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as tax map 24 Lot 34.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. Going to ask for a roll call vote, since we're doing this by Zoom. And I, Bonnie Winona McKinnon, vote aye. Kevin, will you be next?
Aye.
Terry?
Yes, aye.
Teresa?
Aye, but point of clarification, we do not accept, we approve applications, but it is a definite point of order that needs to be made.
You're saying the wording of the motion should be approved, not accepted?
That is correct.
Okay with you, Kevin?
Yes, I amend the request to approve the application, case 21-003-VA.
Do you agree with that, Terry? Because you seconded it?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so now we're going to revote, since it has been slightly amended. I, Bonnie Winona McKinnon, vote aye. That means yes. Kevin?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Teresa?
Hi.
Mr. Frankowitz, the application has been approved. There's a 30-day period in which anyone in the public, can you all hear me? Yep. Can try to overturn our decision? So if you start the project within 30 days, you have a slight risk that somebody might to our decision.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Next case. Case number 21004-VA, application from Joseph Felzone, requesting a variance from Article 2, Section C, Dot 1, Dot B of the zoning ordinance to allow common driveways to not be located on the common boundary line. The property is located on Guile Road in Nottingham, is identified as map 40 Lot 1. Are you representing yourself this evening, Mr.?
No, Scott Cole is present, my engineer.
Scott, would you like to speak to this application, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Cole from Beals Associates, representing Joe Felzone, the landowner and developer. I'm hoping this is a simple one for the board. The process that we have actually come to is we have gone through the planning board process. We did actually meet with you folks earlier on this. If you recall, we had a request for a variance for wetland impacts for three driveways. For a seven-lock, seven-lock frontage subdivision on Guile Road, where we did have a nice site walk to review the three driveways, which were all staked out with gray stakes and red flagging. Since that time, we have gone through the whole planning board process. Successfully, we have gotten a conditional approval. However, at the end of that review, we have discovered through the planning review that even though we had walked, and yourselves all agreed on the wetland impact locations, the driveways themselves being not along the property lines actually need relief from your board. So we've been working with New Hampshire DES for the least impacting areas to the wetlands. And as a result, we do have driveways that are not between the common boundary lines. If need be, I think everybody's familiar with it. I do have a plan if somebody would like to see it.
I think you should put the plan up because I I think you should put the plan up because I, I think it's only, it only two lots that are impacted.
What we have done here is there's a seven lot subdivision. Lot one stands by itself with one, one entryway. And then lots two and three have a common driveway. Four and five, and then six and seven. As you can see here, two and three, we are off the boundary line in this location here. That's due to working with the Hampshire DES. They have access to provide a 50 foot. Buffer to the wetland in this location here, which we have done. In doing so, we had to shift the driveway 20 feet to the west. So it is along the same alignment as the boundary line, however, not currently on it. Even though it's very close. And then as you can see, when we get to the next one. Here, that one is along the boundary line, which is adequate. And then for lots six and seven, which is the longer of the lots. Due to the minimization of the impact in the wetlands here, we are basically centered on lot six. Going up until it splits way up past the field area. Basically two locations, we believe, as. Noticed by the planning board that would need the variance leave for the driveways not being on a common boundary.
Thank you. Do any members of, are you done, Mr. Cole?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, does, do any members of the board? No questions? So would you care to? Have you prepared the criteria for a variance?
Yeah, we did. Like I can read them in the record?
Record, please, so that the board members also. Hear them.
So number one, granting the variance not be contrary to the public interest because. Of crossing a wetland at its most narrow point per New Hampshire DES. If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance will be observed because, obviously because it protects more of the sensitive areas in working with the state. Number three, granting a variance would do substantial justice because. We are bonding to a state agency for minimal impacts in putting the drives along the common brownie line. It would actually cause greater disturbance. If the variance is granted, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished because. We said the same number of lots could be approved on such a large piece of land or more in a different configuration. Number five, unnecessary hardship. Owning to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance will result in unnecessary hardship because. Number one, no fair substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose. Provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because. It is a recommendation from the state to allow the driveways in the current designed location. The proposed use is reason because it provides the least amount of impact to wetlands. And item B, explain how if the criteria is a paragraph A and are established. An unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if. Owning to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict performance for the ordinance and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. This parcel consists of a very large buildable area which sits behind a wetland feature. Making it different from other parcels as we are working with the Hampshire DES to develop the land at its best practice possible. Believe that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Are there questions from any members of the board? I'm hearing none. I will now open up questions and comments to members of the public. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this application? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to comment? Or question? I hear no, I hear no members of the public went wishing to speak. I'm now going to close the public hearing. And ask the members of the board to deliberate if they wish. Or to make a motion if they wish. So I don't know if all of you were present when we granted. The wetland crossings for this subdivision. I think most of you were, if not all of you. Were you at it Kevin? Were you present? I mean, we did a site walk and everything. So it sounds like. Even though these driveways don't meet the exact language of the ordinance, they better serve. The terrain, the wetlands that exist.
Madam Chair, I did not do the site walk, but I was on the zoning board.
You can see the terrain on the map too. So anyway, if, if there are no comments or Terry, did you have something to say?
No, no.
Then I will entertain a motion from someone on the board, please.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve case 21 dash 004 dash VA. Application from Joe Falzone requesting a variance from Article Two, Section One, Section C one B. Of the zoning ordinance to allow common driveways to not be located on the common boundary line. The property is located on Guile Road in Nottingham is identified as map 40 lot one.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you Kevin. Is that you Kevin?
Yes.
It says Harriet under your, under your picture on my screen. So if I call you Harriet, Zoom has identified you.
It's not your fault.
My fault. But anyway, a motion has been made, seconded to approve. Case 2004 as presented to the board. All those in favor. Signify by raising your hand and saying yes or no, I or nay. I will vote I. Terry, would you be next, please?
Yes, I'll vote I.
Kevin? Teresa?
Hi.
Or yeses and, that was it, right Joanna? Looks like you have your approval, Mr. Felzone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
You have again, like everyone else, 30, a 30 day window.
Correct.
In which anyone can contest our decision.
Great, thank you.
Know that. You're welcome. Next case. Case 21 005 VA, application from Mark Pitkin. And Laurie Ann Trossell Pitkin for a variance from Article Three, Section B four of the zoning ordinance. To permit an impact to wetlands to install a driveway for a single family home. The property is located on Guile Road in Nottingham is identified as map 40 lot 14. Who's representing this application?
Joseph Nichols, Nichols Environmental.
What was your name, sir?
Joseph Nichols.
Thank you, Joe. Joe Nichols. Go ahead, Mr. Nichols. As with everyone else, you will be, you will have the floor. You will present your case. Board members may question you. You will make your, you will, you will present the five criteria for receiving a variance. And then I will turn it over to members of the public and then the board will make their decision. Probably.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Um, so we're asking for a variance to allow two crossings totaling 2,522 square feet. The first one will be the larger one, which is 1,048 of permanent impact. There's 307 of that will be temporary for construction. It has a 24 inch culvert. They'll be crossing with a 16 foot gravel wide. Access to allow access to a 19 acre parcel in the rear of upland. The second crossing is 854 permanent, 323 of that will be temporary. To be able for construction. We met with the Conservation Commission. They also did a site walk on Saturday and have signed off on our crossing locations based on our presentation and what they saw in the field. The reason for this is they're going to be building a single family residence in the rear of the parcel, which is, you know, a large portion of it. Which is upland. We've minimized the impacts by crossing in the narrowest points. So when you go out there, if you looked at it, you would see there's a larger system to the right. There's a larger system to the left. And these are drainage channels that are actually connecting the two systems that we'll be crossing at. And that's why they're at the narrowest point. We've provided supporting documentation. So the supporting information I can read. Variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the variance would not be contrary, because the in. Intent of the ordinance is to restrict and minimize impacts to wetlands. The proposed project will install a driveway and underground utilities has been placed in such a manner to minimize the impact to wetland. And surrounding buffers by applying to New Hampshire DS for a wetland impact permit. This allows the state and town opportunity to review. The impact that is located within the area of least impact. The enforced under Nottingham zoning Article 6M fill and dredge in wetlands as well as NH. RSA Chapter 482 dash A dash three in the Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules 100 to 1, or 800. The spirit or the ordinance is observed by minimizing the amount of impact to the wetland buffers and surrounding properties. This is accomplished by following procedures established by the state and town. The town regulations under zoning 6M implies that permits are allowed to fill and dredge within wetlands. Provided that they provide application in accordance with the Hampshire RSA Chapter 482 A three in the Hampshire Code. Administrative Rules 100 to 800. Substantial justice is done by following the regulations. By following state and town regulations, this allows the review of impacts by New Hampshire DS, New Hampshire Conservation Commission. And Nottingham ZBA notify the butters and the public. By allowing the permitting process to take place, it allows for all of the involved to review the impact. Is indeed located to minimize the impact while allowing for the justified use of installing a driveway. And utilities to access a large buildable portion of the property. There is no gain of the public from denying the variance that outweighs the loss of the applicant from denial. Granting the variance will accomplish substantial justice. The values of the surrounding properties are not diminished. They will not be diminished by allowing the installation of a driveway for a single family residence. The proposed use is allowed within the zoning district and is consistent with the surrounding properties. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance was, would result in a necessary hardship. A for the purposes of subparagraph, unnecessary hardship means that. Owning to a special condition of the property that distinguishes it from other properties in the area. No fair and substantial relationship exists. Between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision in the specific application of that provision. To the property and. Five A continued, there is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public. The purpose of this ordinance is to preserve the town's rural character while avoiding effects to abutting properties and resources. The installation of a driveway and utilities for a single family residence is consistent with the area. A lot allowed within the zoning district and will not devalue abutting properties. Location of the driveway and underground utilities has been located as to minimize the impacts to the wetland and surrounding buffer area. The proposed use is a reasonable one. The proposed use is reasonable as it is justified use consistent with the surrounding properties and allowed within the zone of district. There any further questions I can ask about the impact areas or the plan?
Excuse my senile old cat. Excuse me. If I turn on the kitchen sink, he'll be quiet.
Kevin here. Yep, there are, there are four pictures in your, in your package.
Yep.
And I am guessing that these pictures were taken possibly late fall?
Yes, it is correct.
Specific to photo one and two, crossing number one. I see, you know, softwood and hardwoods. There is no real visible standing water, although this past year, that may not be the case. And I also don't notice, you know, any, I'm going to say stream bed or, or, you know, a lot of visual. Of, of running water.
Right.
Can you, can you comment on that?
Yeah, again, so if you look at photo one where the stone wall is to left hand side, there's a larger system off the left. This is kind of a narrow little drainage path that comes down from that system and then feeds into the other one. You know, there's a little bit of snow melt now so that there is some running water. But you can see that they've actually had a logging road in there in the past and we're coming in the same general location that they've logged before. Because that is the narrowest location. You can see that, you know, like you said, there's not a lot of distinguishment between the upland and wetland in these locations. Because the system is so narrow and it, it's not really your typical wetland with cattails and different vegetation. You know, it's hard to distinguish it other than the soils and, you know, a little bit of topography relief that connects the two. Same with photos three and four, same thing. There's small, little area that connects the two pieces together.
Yeah, specific to, to three and four. I mean, I do see some water on the left hand side on, on photo four.
Yeah, that's the larger system though. That's beyond the stone wall. So if you look at. The photo four, you'll see the larger system located to the left of the stone wall. On the plan. I don't know if you can see my cursor or not.
I can.
Yep, understood. And, and the fact that there are hardwoods here that. And softwoods that don't like their feet wet for a long period of time. Really says that this is. I'll say a minimal wetland area.
Yeah, that is correct.
Right, when. Cause when you said you were putting, are you putting 24 inch culverts in both?
Yes, we're putting 24 is, we're oversizing the culverts. We could have went with 15, but we went with 24.
Yeah, because I mean, looking at the pictures and listen to your 24 inch description, I would, I, I expected a lot more. Wetland, but yeah, I mean, this doesn't look, I could see by the wall, it looks like in that picture one, there's a little, it looks like maybe a little runoff there. By the walls.
A little opening in the wall. Yep.
You said that the Conservation Commission did a site walk and basically approved your plan?
Yeah, the Conservation Commission had a meeting, plus we had a site walk on Saturday. And they signed off on the wetlands application to be able to be sent up to New Hampshire.
And did they suggest any kind of mitigation for the crossing of that area by. Aquatic or semi aquatic creatures, turtles and salamanders and.
Liked that we were going with a gravel driveway and that we oversized our culverts and the type of culvert that we went with. And they were okay with that.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions from the board?
I, I just had one comment.
Terry?
I was just going to say, you know, I've been on the ZBA for many, many years. This is one of the nicest packages we've ever got, so. I mean, it's nice, organized, it's really.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the feedback.
So there being no further questions or comments from the board at this time, I'm going to open it up for public questions, comments. First, does anyone wish to speak in support of this application? I'm hearing no one.
I, I, I would like to, this is Joe Felzoni, I bought the property.
Hi, Joe.
I, I think it's great that it wasn't mentioned, but it's a fifty-six acre lot and there's only one house going on it. And when all the butters come out to view what I was doing, they had said that by me pushing the houses back, they were only going to see one or two. You're not even going to see this house. You'd have to go fifteen hundred feet in. So I think that's a great feature for my property on the other side as well, as well as for, for the town.
Does, does anyone else from the public wish to speak for, against, or just in general ask questions or comment on this application? The butters or members of the public? I'm not hearing any. I'm therefore going to close the public hearing and open it up to the board to, for deliberations. Further questions? Motions, whatever. Does anyone from the board wish to speak to this application? So there being no questions, perhaps a, a motion is in order? Or, or against?
No. I'll make a motion to approve case twenty-one zero zero five dash VA application from Matt Pitkin and Laura Ann Crossel-Pitkin for a variance from Article Three, Section B four of the zoning ordinance to permit an, to permit an impact to the wetlands to install a driveway for a single family home. The property is located on Guile Road in Nottingham, is identified as map forty lot fourteen.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify. I will vote aye. Terry?
I vote aye.
Kevin? Teresa?
Hi.
So you have four ayes and no other, no other vote. Mr. Nichols, your application has been approved. You have a thirty day window in which anyone may contest our decision. So if you begin your project before that thirty days is up, it's on your own, it's at your own risk.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay. Joanna, do we have staff members update? I know, don't we have some minutes to act on? I don't see it on the agenda, but I, oh yes, it is, duh. Do you have any updates for the board?
Joanna, do you have any updates?
Okay, this is, this is March. Are we going to plan to review our minutes as we do annually for the April meeting? No, we're going to wait till after the election, I suppose.
June, I guess.
If then, June eighth, right? I take that back. So the minutes. Joanna sent us all the edited minutes?
Yes, they're all edited.
Does anyone have any comments? Concerned about the minutes?
Raylene's not on, but she sent back that they reflected, so she supported them as well, just so you are aware.
Thank you. She was at this. Could I have a motion regarding the minutes, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one as amended.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded regarding the minutes. I, Bonnie Winona McKinnon, vote aye. Terry?
Aye.
Kevin?
Okay.
Teresa?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes have been approved. Three, three ayes and one abstention. Is there further business for us to contemplate this evening, Joanna? Don't have anything? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Will someone second that?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. I vote aye. Terry?
Aye.
Kevin? Teresa?
Aye. Good night, everyone.
Good night, night.